You have any idea how much you did rain, you head up in that area?
I did not check the rain gauge. I mean, it went, it came down pretty well last night and then it stopped. And I don't know when it started in the middle of the night because I didn't wake up. But when I was up a few times, it was raining from about four. I don't know when it started though. We just had a good little shower before the sun went down. Maybe, maybe a tenth or something, I don't know. And then, I don't know what happened this morning. I didn't check before I left. It was sometimes dark out.
It looked like according to radar, they were getting a little more last night than what we do early, you know, while in bed. Pretty good shower coming through Westboro County.
That's an estimate for those others that we're talking about.
Is this not covered by the insurance?
No. He hasn't done all these projects yet.
He hasn't done the roof either.
Do you know what a lucky seven strainer is, this bill?
It'd be in the, in the, uh, lower inventory of stain, basic stain. But I don't know what the lucky seven is. I would say it's a burn-in, but that could just be my guess.
Okay. I have another piece of business if we could maybe address that. Well, we have eight fifteen, he's not here yet. I was contacted, I'm assuming because it's in my district, but the Vesper Community Center is doing a renovation project. And they would like our letter of recommendation for them because they are going to be applying for grants. I kind of just took it at face value, what I was asked to do. And so I wanted to bring it up before the board and I just drafted this letter. I would like it to be maybe reprinted on our letterhead and then if you would sign it. But to whom it may concern, the Lincoln County Commission recognizes the efforts of the Vesper Community Center and its goals to update its facility and to continue offering a great service to the surrounding area. It is our understanding that there is a renovation project currently seeking grant funding to remodel the electrical system for the building. We commend the group showing determination to complete this project and give our recommendation of this organization as a worthy recipient. I see a typo already.
Today five oh one C three, what order?
I assume, I assume.
Yes, I believe they are. Because I, the, the grants that they're applying for, I don't think they would be eligible if they weren't. And if we, if you want me to check up on that, I can.
I think we need to know for sure.
Yeah, I think we're better.
Okay.
I would.
I would assume they are, but.
If they are, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I will ask. Is there, I, I forwarded, I forwarded an email to you, or I sent you an email. I'll wait for you to forward that to the office so they can maybe print that out and file a typo.
You forwarded those?
I sent, yeah, to you.
Okay.
Could you ask them to?
Yeah, I can.
Okay.
Let me fix the typo too. Looks like it's up here.
Unfortunately, I don't.
Okay, I did check and their confirmation is yes, that it is a nonprofit. So is that something you're willing to endorse, the letter of recommendation?
I don't have a problem with it. I don't have a problem. Not in the place around anybody's got to hold anything big.
And that anyone what?
It's about the only facility around to hold anything big.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want to call John Paulin? He, he was sitting in the office. Do we want to, or in the hallway, excuse me. Yeah.
He had somebody with him earlier and I thought maybe he was still at a salesman.
Oh, they were just sitting in.
Oh, salesman.
Morning.
Hi.
Good morning.
Everyone knows me, this is James Hope. I say his name, he's with the B and D. B and D, okay.
Yes, sir.
About Manhattan.
Manhattan.
Yep, you know Manhattan.
Really, when I'm here, I guess, I, I talked to him, I did look at his machine. And I do like it. It does feel a little better than getting under the desk and things like that. But I knew he were kind of crushed for money. And he's willing to give us a discount, but I thought right now at this point, I might be a whole. But I am conservative about service and the products I use with Pure Zone. And I haven't seen a Pure Zone salesman since feet long. And, and he came and he's kind of given me some good pointers on doing the floors and things like that. And he wants to get our service, our business. He's willing to, I guess I'll just let you go ahead and probably take it off.
Well, I do know there is going to be three of you. Here's a little brochure. But what we do are actually environmental services specialists. And so, like you said, with Pure Zone, what we do, we provide, you know, cleaning supplies and actually cleaning procedures. So, you know, in this type of industries, business, people sometimes don't know exactly how to do certain things, how to disinfect, how long to disinfect, different methods. We bring that, that's a part of our service. But we also supply, you know, toilet paper, paper towels and things like that. And I know with Pure Zone, you guys pay a shipping fee, forty-five dollars, something like that. We deliver for free, we're here twice a week. And so, when he or you guys would see me, you had a question about doing floors or what should I do with this type of floor, what procedure or method to disinfect a restroom and that sort of thing. We have all those procedures for free. We're actually here to help you guys educate and make sure things run smoothly. And along with that, we do many hospitals, nursing homes, school districts. And, excuse me. And let's say if John was out doing the lawn or something. And we track your inventory and I see that you guys need a case paper towels. There's no minimum or minimum requirement that you have to order, which I think you guys have with Pure Zone. Which means you wouldn't be able to stock with can liners or toilet tissue, hand soap or anything. You need a case toilet tissue, you order it, you got a case toilet tissue for free. So, that's basically what we do. So, we're in Salina, we do a couple nursing homes in the school district in Salina. The nursing home in Concordia as well as Glasgow. Go as far west as Keatingman. That's basically just a spill down and those are the products that we provide. You guys have any questions?
When you were talking at first about the machine, you're talking about a stripping machine?
Well, it's more of a cleaning machine.
It's a, it does that, it strips, it, just a general cleaning, just overall.
It's a smaller machine.
Than what you have now?
Yeah.
Are we renting what you have now? I'm sorry, I don't know what.
We own, we own, we own the machine.
Okay.
It's just a bigger machine.
Okay.
You can go up and down the hallways, maybe into the rooms that's open, otherwise it's this machine. Mine's a seventeen inch wide machine. This one's like a fourteen inch wide machine. You can go underneath the desk, raise it up, it flips around, you can suck the water out.
More high-tech than what you're operating now?
Well, I don't know if it's high-tech, but yeah, it's a little, a little more personal.
Is there a resale value on the one that we own?
Don't know. They, they wouldn't be able to do a trade-in or anything, but they don't use.
I think the reason why he talked to me about the machine in the first place because right now, like you said, he's not seeing the reps. So, the batteries were bad and he didn't know where to go. Like I said, it's like come here, I'm visiting, say hey, this, we actually have demo machines that we can leave him, you know, while we take yours and figure out what's going on, troubleshoot, they say bring it back, take our demo back. So, it's really service-based, you wouldn't have to, it's been a while. On the phone for ten, fifteen minutes trying to figure out, okay, how do we fix, what's going to cost?
What's the name of the company that we use then?
Well, we use, we use Pure Zone.
Pure Zone?
And I have two or three other salesmen, one's a hard sell, he's going to do something, I buy a little bit. But our favorite towels and toilet paper come through and our trash bag, everything that comes in here. Now, since then, I get the batteries recharged, they're.
There's some contract with them?
Our machine's working.
Is there a contract with them?
No. The only reason we were staying with them is because they supplied the toilet tissue holders and the paper towels. So, they would do the same thing, they'd switch out to their product with their own holders in. He didn't mention too, if I wasn't here, he'd stock with, with the product away from him. So, it's all about service.
All there is, I'm sure you.
Not very well.
No, and that's why, the reason why, the reason why I didn't really, I talked to him out there and said, I wasn't going to bring out the machine. But I would like to use his service. And I thought we needed to get that okay because we'd have to switch out all the, you know, paper towel holders. Toilet paper holder. Charge for that.
No, no, the dispensers are free, there's no installation fee. And actually, I would like to look at what you're paying now to make sure that we're saving you guys money. So, this would make more sense than it already does now on top of the service.
Do you have any comparison to, to give us as far as what the expenses are on a monthly or yearly basis with Pure Zone versus what you think? I mean, are we looking at this as a cost savings or an increase in cost to get better service?
I'd have to just see what the price is in comparison. That's why you would say, you would save us money here.
Well, that'd probably be what I'd like to see.
Maybe even save us money then.
Do a little cost comparison and then come back and say.
Now, let's say this, if, if you were in favor of the machine. Okay, I'll just. If you're in favor of, of this machine, of beginning a new machine, it needs only take a thousand dollars off the price if we could go service with it. I do know that the county-owned machine at the nursing home blew up. And so, our old machine could go out there and use the machine on a daily basis.
When did that happen?
Blew up.
Well.
Good run on your man.
When I say it puff smoke, I shouldn't say it blew up, but it did puff smoke last time, Jonathan, I kept fixing it, fixing it.
Darkened the motor.
And I kind, it was a smaller machine too, and I was thinking about, checking to see about if we could trade. But then, when I called him one day, he said, no, our machine just poofed and it's unfixable. So, and that was a county-owned machine they were using. So, and I thought, well, our machine could go out there, instead he would use it, they have bigger hallways. And, you know, who knows, three years, we might own, own the building again and still need a machine out there, so. But I don't, that was an option to take the machine, otherwise you can try to sell it. But we can do a price comparison and then I can come back to you.
What is the price of this machine through your company?
Uh, without the discount, it'd be thirty-six sixty-eight. And so, taking off one thousand dollars, it'd be twenty-six sixty-eight.
What is the discount for, to render your services to us?
Yeah, I was just going to throw it in, you know, as a deal package there, I can get.
But this isn't something that's in your budget?
I don't have anybody. I'm just an experian.
Out of the general?
Yeah.
Is there a line item though? No?
You guys have any questions?
I have a question, where do you get your products? Where do you?
Art, Art Henderson? Um, we get them through, we have a couple, so our three, and RJ Share.
Where, I mean, where are they out of? I don't, I'm not familiar.
And so, we order them for stock, we have a warehouse, and then they bring to us.
Do you have a pricing sheet?
I'd, I'd have to see your prices. I don't have a pricing sheet. I'd estimate the cost in my head, basically.
Which is?
Well, like toilet tissue, paper towel, all that good stuff, yeah.
What would be that rough estimate in your head?
Um, case of toilet tissue, ninety-six rolls, you're looking at anywhere from forty-nine dollars to sixty.
Depending on the, the quality of.
There's different, they're all two ply. They're all two ply and then if you want branding, of course, that's going to be a little more expensive. But typically in the quarter houses that we've done, the Clay Center does where they're fine with our general, general five hundred supply. Which is just your standard.
Okay.
That what we're using now?
Two ply, yeah, ours is about fifty-seven dollars a case, plus the, I was getting the price from. Uh, the, the paper towels, we wouldn't want to use the brown, wouldn't use the kind of the white. It's opposite, it's the latest type of service.
It's not a problem. I don't have a problem with changing it, it's beneficial to us, so.
Do you sell the recycled paper, hand paper towels?
Recycle?
The brown, the brown?
Yeah, yeah, we sell, yeah. Yeah, everything agency from there. Kind of the trash, trash cans, rugs, all that good stuff, so. Like I said, once I can look at the prices, match it, make it, just make sure it makes sense.
Okay.
So, would you like to know, like me to come back with pricing or can you not go ahead and switch?
I think you better come back, yeah.
Okay.
I think we need to see a price comparison and in the general interest of our hometown, I would like to know what our options are to buy locally. You know, I think that, I mean, I'm sorry, but you're coming to us from out of town and we are in a financial situation that's constrained with our small towns here. So, you know, I would, I would be interested to know what we can do as far as working out any kind of purchasing through our, our local distributors of just regular house goods. I mean, home goods, I should say. These are the kinds of decisions that economically, you know, we need to be conscientious of. And at this table, it's, it's our purpose to be stewards of the money.
Of course, of course.
And I understand that you probably provide good services.
Right, right.
But if we can have that dollar pass through our own people first, that's where my priorities are. And I'm just saying that, you know, aloud.
Our, our biggest problem with that is on the paper towels and the toilet paper usually, especially on the toilet paper, the toilet paper is usually made for those holders. Like even one of the two of the other salesmen I've asked about getting a price comparison, when they were trying to match the toilet paper I was using, they couldn't match that toilet, because that toilet paper is made for that.
One of the reasons why we went to a holder was because people were stealing our locally purchased toilet paper.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And that's not employees stealing, that's general public coming in and stealing the toilet paper. So, you kind of went, that's why we went with a toilet paper holder and a paper towel.
Dispenser.
Yeah.
That would probably be the holdup on the law, instead of providing. Dispenser just.
Yeah, because they're both, of the dispensers are Pure Zone dispensers, so they're probably made from Pure Zone product. He might be able to match the paper towels, but you know, we can still switch out the dispensers for the next year or so. But otherwise, the toilet paper, like I said, one of the other companies, XTR or whatever, he couldn't match it. I mean, he couldn't find the dimensions to use, so he'd have to switch out himself. Oh, most of them would provide the dispensers, you know, for the product, because they don't fit. Now, the only cost, only thing with cost of water is if you want to do a non-hand dispensary, oh, you're pushing it up. Then it costs, costs a lot more. Like cost. Whatever, you had a public cost or something like that.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they. So, we could put together a cost analysis for you.
Yeah, I want you to do that, John Paul.
Okay.
Sounds great. Go back from there.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You too.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Like for the.
You out of room?
Yeah, I'm fine.
All right. Morning.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I'm good. Busy?
Busy day.
An active weekend. Well, I came up in schedule appointments so I could do a follow-up on our request from Mr. Schneider. How would you guys like to deal with that?
Assume I probably need an executive session to visit with you.
That's fine. I think you also probably need to explore the financial issues of that and that's probably more so with Michael.
Yes, I, we will have to.
So, I know he's coming in at nine, so we can talk a little bit. But I think at this point, whether you're going to do it or not, you're going to have to look at the financial part of this.
Well, we need to look at the financial aspects as a first, you think?
Well, I mean, I don't know what an executive session would do at this point as I've done what you guys wanted me to do. We have received a request back. I think you have to decide whether or not you're going to upgrade a dirt road to a gravel. You need to look at the financial side of that, whether that's something that you can do or not do. And I think, you know, discussing that publicly is not a problem, in my opinion, because this is financial expenditure of county money over a road within your jurisdiction. Now, how, if you decide to do that, then maybe that comes that we need another executive session to kind of talk about the liability of that and how that's going to work and such. But I think there has to be some discussion between you, you and you as to how this is going to work.
So, the correspondence that we have received, is that public document?
Well, at this point, a lawyer had sent that to me and I sent that to you. I don't think it changes the fact that, I mean, he's came here publicly and told you what he wants. I mean, there's no, he wants you guys to upgrade the dirt road to gravel. You need to figure out whether or not you could financially do that or whether you're so inclined to do that. Now, if you're not so inclined to do that, that does, or if you do want to do that, I do think we need an executive session to discuss some things from liability standpoint.
So, I think we're, go ahead.
You know, there's an issue with the terms, the numbers. But. We need to have a comparison to what it's going to cost.
Yeah, and I don't know those numbers.
We don't know the cost, right. So, we need that to be delivered to us from the highway department as far as what.
He may have been working on it.
I mean, we talked about this a long time ago when it was initially brought in the beginning of the year as far as a per mile cost. But where I would like to see the discussion go with Jennifer here is what are we going to do about the policy for the county? Because to me, that's where we need consultation. As far as what we decide to do on an individual basis, that's what this, that's what our resolution says we can do. We can have a discussion and say, you know, we're going to make you pay ten percent of the cost or we're going to do this because it's justified, et cetera. My concern is, if we have this existing resolution, how and why it's being followed has yet to be determined. And looking at the other comparative things that have happened, which I pointed out a few weeks ago, there are only four other scenarios that we can look at. So, if you believe this to be an issue with someone coming to us and requesting this of us, then I think we need to address it across the board with a policy change or update, modification, however you want to look at that.
I think the most appropriate step would be for me to continue to pull some different ideas from other counties, similarly situated from a population standpoint, but also geographically. You know, we have historically kind of looked at Salina in a lot of ways and they have a policy on this where they just don't do it. They also rezoned, so there's some differences there between us. However, I can continue to pull those and get those to you all. And you can kind of look at what you like, don't like, and we can see whether or not that's something we need to do. I mean, my point of it, it continues to be, what I'm hearing from this board is, you know, the financial side of that and how we're going to be able to deal with that. And if that's the case, then I'll pull certain policies that, take that into consideration and others for you to review. If you're okay with that, I'll do that.
I guess, we had an agreement one time. It wasn't fulfilled.
Yes, I, I really think we're going to have to look at the policy. It is too open-ended, ladies. We are open to a change in this board every two years. So, I think, you know, we need some direction. To that, I have great concerns of an open policy that I don't think we can financially support.
That was less somewhat open to deal with whether you're doing a half a mile of road or two miles.
Yeah, but it was never specifically stated in there, I think, is, is part of the problem. We could, we could get into a situation where it's not two miles, it could be four or five miles in this county because our county has an old, it was a road deal. We don't have township, so all of those roads are county. And in this case, probably that would not have been a county. And in this case, probably that would not have been a county road. I mean, you know, and how the township would have dealt with that. You know, and they're very limited on their expenses. We have a little deeper pockets, townships do. But in reality, it all comes from the same place. We're just going to take, we're able to take it from all pockets in there.
I understand that. And my concern is, I want, I want everything to be above board. I want individuals who move here or want to build houses here to kind of have an understanding and the expectations of what they will get. But again, you know, we do have home role, you have the ability to deal with your roads however you want to deal with them. But I, I do think that when that was put into effect about 18 years ago, our situation and our lifestyle and our county was in a very different situation than we are now. So I think we just have to be, you know, cognizant of that.
Well, I think my suggestion is we take the economic development clause out of that, because the basic premise of the resolution that we have is that we're justifying road improvements based on whether or not something in that area is enhancing the tax base that needs that road. So being that we cannot define that, whether it's a home or a business, and, and/or an expansion of a business, however we look at that, that may not necessarily play a part in our future decisions, at least short term. Whatever we decide now doesn't have to be what the policy is 10 years from now. But if we're saying right now, we're financially restricted, we need to take care of the problems that we have, and not expend money on doing projects that basically create a greater upkeep cost, then we need to have that clarified. So the way that it states, and Jennifer, correct me if I'm wrong, please, but the way that that reads is, if there's going to be an economic development to the county, which in my translation means an enhanced tax base, then we are considering upgrading roads at that point for that particular request.
Well, it is an option. I mean, it doesn't take away from your home role and your ability to say no, but it is an option. But, you know, at that point, economic development, you know, there was a foundation that was being formed, there was a lot of things occurring in our community, and that kind of fell in line with what was trying to be accomplished at that point. I don't read it strictly by any means, but then again, I didn't put together my resolution.
Right, but the need for the resolution isn't even there without addressing economic development. I mean, the resolution is basically pointless unless you're using the pretense of economic development the way that it's written. So we need to go back to, what are the Highway Department policies? You know, are, are we going to say that existing roads are a priority over, you know, upgrading tiered levels of, you know, roads from, everything from highly tra, you know, highly traveled to minimum maintenance? I think that's a basic thing that has been neglected to be defined.
When was that, when was that galvanizing plant about time they did that resolution?
I don't think so, honestly, the, Bob Krangle might disagree with me, but the resolution came out of, there was an economic development group that was formulated, and Bob Krangle was the chairperson of it. And he had struggled with his road getting it done, and so he convinced that group to come up here and convince the commissioners that we needed to change it because of the economic development. So it was somewhere around.
That was before your time?
It was right before I took office.
Who was the attorney?
Bob Krangle. And I believe the galvanizing plant was after that, because if I recall right.
It was either after or before.
Yeah, it was somewhere in there, I remember. I remember John Coverman was on.
I know, I wasn't a commissioner, or a clerk. I know I wasn't a clerk when the resolution was done.
I can look at those and prepare those and bring some others to your attention and redraft what we have, and you guys can look at it. This is kind of a crazy court week for me, I'll try to have it done by next Monday. But I can't guarantee it, because I have Judge Pepe coming down for hearings, for county attorney related cases.
Well, I think the least time-consuming thing that you may be able to do is just give us a cut and dry, bare minimum. You know, all requests for improvements will be done at the cost of the requister. I mean, that gives us at least a baseline to start with. Are, are we in agreement at this table that our money needs to be going into doing repairs that haven't been done versus progressive type? Do you have a response for that?
Well, yeah, I think the true, my biggest problem is we are creating roads that are, that are not going to benefit anybody but one person. You know, there is no tie-in to another gravel road to make, you know, to enhance the flow of traffic in this county. That, that concerns me. And, and the thing that I continue to say is, once we open that door, how are we going to get it closed? If you want to feed yard, you know, you can feed cattle anywhere, are we going to, that's economic development. In fact, that's probably going to create a lot more economic development, a lot of things in this area. Are we going to gravel that road, you know, upgrade that road? And I think that's, to me, that's, that's a headlight out there that is blinding me. And I'm very hesitant to improve any roads because of that, without that taxpayer or that person putting, as I said, skin in the game, you know, now, how much skin is there? I guess, I think, you know, the proposal that was brought back, just, I'll be right on it, isn't even close to me.
Well, if the cost, if the cost, you know, I can off the top of my head calculate the cost of doing the project, not accurately, but closely, and it's, it's not close.
Well, I agree with your concerns, but I think what we're failing to do as a board is address the policy. That's, that's what the governing body.
You know, I, I think that's interesting, makes it a comment, because I have been concerned about that policy probably for 12 years, but we've never gotten anything to do. It's one of those things, if one of these things comes up and we know the policy needs to change, then it passes, and we kind of let it die down, thinking that we won't have to deal with it again. And I guess the other part is, you know, the policy's going to have to be pretty tight to get up here. And that bothers me a little too. I think you got to have, you got to have room for discretion. And the policy that they had gave us discretion, but we're having a little trouble dealing with that.
But that was also, in my opinion, a long-term thought, and look how long it's lasted, nearly 18 years. What we decide today may be short-term vision for the next two, three years. And the next people who are making these policies, they change that. That's the whole point of the rotation of being an elected official. You know, at that time, you do what's necessary and best for your situation. And if we're saying this is a dated policy because it's too liberal lenient for our tax expenditure at the moment, then, like you said, it may need to be strict, and, and that's just something that we have to make that decision and let it be that way until the next person comes along and wants to change it. But right now, if it's in the best interest of the county to say, we're not going to do any improvements unless the entirety of the cost is consumed by the requister, that, you know, that may be a solution. I know personally that, that there are other people in the county who have paid for their own gravel in its entirety, but we do have a few precedent-setting issues about road improvements that this request was made to us under the current policy, so we have to deal with it that way. If you don't like it, then we change the policy in the next request that comes to our table. We deal with it according to the policy that we have set.
So I guess, Jennifer, it sounds like maybe that we are looking for a development of a policy. And we will have to deal with the situation that's up at the table right now. And when we get some numbers, I think we need some numbers from the County Highway Department, so we can analyze what we want to do, and then probably need to visit with you about our liability and what precedents we're setting. I guess the other thing is, you know, work, 20 years ago could not be done at home. You know, basically. The internet has opened the field up, and so you can live in 10 months too, and have a job, you know. So I, you know, I think that's one of the problems that that policy has too, is that, you know, we did not think about people buying land up in nowhere land, and you want, being able to work and, you know, have a million-dollar home, and, you know, there's no problem, they can earn their wage, it's easy. And transportation, the ability to get from one place to another has certainly improved too.
I will call Dawn, I'll see how my hearings go this week. I think I, I don't have anything on October 2nd, so I should be able to, to get something done. And so I take it we'll be talking to the Highway Department shortly?
Shortly.
Just as a clarification though, because we were visited last week, and we hadn't spoken with you, so the response was, well, we haven't had, you know, counsel, and we aren't going to discuss it. I'm not sure at this point, even if we do get the numbers, let's say, what exactly needs to be discussed in executive session that would stall a decision any further at this point?
Probably the proposed agreement, depends if it's submitted.
The original agreement is up?
From their, this last proposal, then if they can't commit an attorney to ours, I would assume.
Well, I mean, I mean, I know that you don't like to discuss things, or you like it to be public, I understand that, but I think that there's issues of liability, there's issues of discussion, there's issues of attorney-client that should be done in executive session. And I'm not saying that those are, issues are present today, but they could be present next week, depending on what happens with their side of things. Eventually, they may decide, we're tired of waiting on you, we're going to sue you. And if that happens, then I have to look at what that means for you. Is that a declaratory judgment? Does that, does that mean that I'm going to be doing this on your behalf? Or are they suing for monetary damages? Does that then bring in our K-CAM coverage? Those, all of those things that we may have to discuss at some point. But again, you know, they, they are trying to push their timetable too. They have told you what they want, and they've told you the time schedule that they're working under, but again, that's up to them. You know, I have not encouraged them to come up to you, I have continued to talk to Mr. Krangle, but, you know, if that's what they feel like they have to do, that's fine. It's your decision to make as to whether or not you want to do it, regardless of whether or not I'm here and we're executive session, we're talking about things, it's your decision. I can only just tell you what the issues that make resentment subs are. And if you're wanting to not litigate this issue, then as I said, now's the time, you need to have a discussion.
So.
I think he, they may have a timetable, but he's had since, I believe, June to send that road, ask for the original agreement, but hasn't happened.
Well.
The problem I'm seeing with the commission though is, we were given an offer, before the agreement was ever drafted, we were given an offer, and we never gave a counteroffer. And in my dealings with business, and I'm sure you.
He came back, after we turned down the original offer, he came back with the sand.
But that's what I'm saying, we turned down an original offer without a counteroffer. We never said, well, if you throw $25,000 on us, then that's where, you know, that's where we draw the line. In a, in a negotiation situation, I've never experienced a one-sided continual offer. It's kind of like dealing with someone who doesn't speak your language, you just keep throwing out a number until they say okay.
He came in with a, he had an agreement that he wanted to do, and we agreed it.
See, I guess as a bystander, I look at it that differently, because I feel like every time he came in, he had a different offer. And, and you guys would say, yea or nay, you didn't like that, or you did like that. So I, I guess I feel like you kind of did have negotiations in a way, but every time he came in, there was something different. And it's, and I think that's why it's so important that you've turned it over to council, that you let council deal with it. He's turned it, and he's hired an attorney, the counselor should be taking care of it, not him coming back in here. And he's the one that's calling and getting on the agenda, and he's the one that's saying he's bringing Bob with us. And he's the one that didn't realize that Bob was on vacation, apparently the day that he called to get on the agenda. But they're trying to circumvent the attorney part of it now. And I just feel like that's wrong. I feel like, once you've turned it over to council, it needs to go to council, and the council needs to work that out, and then come back with you and say, this is what we've been able to manage to agree with, can you guys agree with this?
But this is an actual litigation, this is just basically hired mediation on his part. There has been no court filing, so, you know, as far as, that's not really, that's like hiring someone to speak for you. That's not really, we're really not dealing with an active case, is what I'm getting at. That's, you know what I mean, this is still, it's an, it's open discussion. There's nothing really legitimately solid in writing.
Once he employed an attorney, it became a case. Whether or not it's been filed up in court or not, it's become a case. And that's how K-CAM is going to look at it, because they're going to ask for all of the minutes back. If, if it ends up being something that K-CAM helps us with, they're going to want all of the documentation of every time they've been in here.
So then how are we as a commission going to assess the monetary value? In the time that we're requesting being spent out of our county-paid office for this, going all the way back? Are we, are we accruing that as part of the weights and measurements of the balance between what we're going to spend on the project versus what we're going to spend on defending ourselves for not doing the project? I mean, how, how do you do that in terms of dollars?
I guess I don't understand the question.
Yeah, I don't understand.
My question is, if, if we're asking our county attorney to spend time, which is technically, however you want to look at it, paid, unpaid, I don't know, because there's a lot of discrepancy in our conversations about what the duties are here. But if we're going to ask time to be spent, are we stacking up that time on our expense for not doing the project versus the actual dollar amount we're going to put into doing the project? Because there has to be a measurement.
There's more to it than that. You go do the project, and you're like Al Dussel, you're opening the door. If anybody wants to come in here and say, I've got a log, they're going to gravel my road.
I just think, the issue that I have is, obviously he's hired Mr. Krangle, obviously I'm involved in it. I don't like them coming to the commission and me not being a part of the conversation. I feel like I spend more time trying to figure out where the situation is. I understand that we need to divide it. There's a policy issue over here, I'll look at it. I think we need to get numbers and figure out what this will cost the county if you were to do this project, and look at that in light of all the other ones. I think when you're comparing projects, I think it's kind of apples and oranges in a lot of ways. I don't recall a situation that we've had where it's a road kind of that way, where we've done that. But we'll just look at it. I just, and I'll talk to Bob and let him know that we're looking at the numbers. I have kept in contact with him. I'm not keeping track of my time on this, because I don't get paid anything for that. You guys pay me a set amount, and that's fine. If you want me to do something different, I can, and I've never been told to do anything different. More so, it doesn't even make sense, because you're not paying me anything more, and that's fine.
Hey, Jennifer, anything else?
No, I don't.
But I will keep in track with you, so we can see where the second looks.
I have a question about the budget before you go. We had decided not to employ a county employee for your office, but there was a budget increase that was decided on. So, I, I mean, I understand as an elected official, you determine the expenditures within your budget. But if we're not approving an employee, is that increase just a cost of living increase? Or what, what is that dollar increase for?
Are you insinuating I'm paying myself that money?
What money?
Well, what are you talking about?
I'm talking about, across the board, we did a 1.4% increase.
Right, and you know what my salary is?
Except for emergency services, and you were deemed under that because of.
Right.
Precedents that. So, we gave more than a 1.4% increase, but that 1.4%. But that 1.4% increase was supposed to cover everyone's cost of living raise. So the additional money that we budgeted for your office, if it, you know, you were requesting it specifically to go so that you could hire a full-time employee. That was the budget that we received from you.
Right, and you didn't approve that?
We didn't approve that, but we still gave you more than the 1.4% increase. So I'm just questioning how that levels.
I guess I feel like that's a, kind of a difficult question to ask because you have to understand what I actually do. I do get, I do receive a salary for doing my job. This board has dictated that that is part-time position. I receive part-time wages and that is out of that budget. And with that, all of us, I think, can recognize maybe yourself, because you're not totally familiar with what I do, that it is not part-time work. We know that and that's fine. On top of that, and that salary...
I'm sorry, but could you clarify that? Because are you insinuating that because it's more than 20 hours, that you're saying that's where you draw the line between part-time and full-time? And you're saying put in more...
No, I don't even know what you're talking about.
You just said that everyone in this, everyone at this, in this, at this table knows except for me, that it's more than part-time. I don't know what that means.
You have dictated that my office is a part-time paid office. That's fine. No matter what, there are statutory duties that I have to do, there is cases that I have to do. This weekend I worked on three cases that came in. So just because when you say, oh, 20 hours, I work more than 20 weeks. But I'm not coming in here to complain about that. I don't even really care to have that conversation because it's absolutely unproductive. The issue that I think you're insinuating is, I wanted this board and this county to start taking over my office's payments. Like, I don't care if you guys put my office in the courthouse. I do not want to pay for the office of the county attorney. When I came here five years ago and we reached an agreement, you're paying me for professional services. I am not going to pay out of my salary to do the office of the county attorney. This board and this county should be paying for those things like you do every other office. And that's all I'm saying. So when you, there is money that is expended from this county out of my budget that goes to my firm, that is a reimbursement for all of the activities and things that I do for you. But it is also a contract, this is the amount. Whether or not things skyrocket, that is the amount that I'm paying. And I, I will deal with that consistently. I have dealt with that consistently. And quite frankly, it's more financially feasible for this county to do it that way. Because you're not incurring budget expenditures for papers, you're not expending budgetary expenditures for insurance for any other employees and I'm fine with that. But that's how we've done it. So when I do my budget, I try to project. Because here's the deal, Ms. Lou. If I could predict crime, I would prevent it. I can't predict what a year is going to be. I can only look at what our past years have been. And our past years have been astronomical. I do not think next year will be any different. Because that's what we're dealing with. So when you increase time, when you increase money, when you increase employees for the sheriff's office, there's a direct correlation into what happens in my office. So if you give money over there, you need to understand that you need to give money to me. Because in my time is what you're paying for. My expertise, my ability to deal with cases, and I need assistance to do that. Just as an example, we do the unsupervised probation for all of this county. You know, we do the diversion program which puts money back in. We deal with the crime victim restitution fund which puts money back in. There's a lot of, a lot of things that people don't know or a lot of programs that people aren't aware of that we run. And I'm not asking for any money for that. But there's expenditures out of my, my budget which directly deal with law enforcement. That's all it deals with, is the expenditure of my office. And to insinuate that I'm like pocketing money or I'm doing something in a way that is inappropriate is just asinine to me. Because that's not how I do things. And that's not how I've done things for the last 18 years that I've done this office. So with that, you know, the board, I have my current budget I'm working under and you can ask Ms. Harlow. I'm very diligent on looking at what my budget is. I have due two jury trials that may hit this year that are set, so that's going to be an issue. I'm not spending any money at this point because I want to try to maintain my budget even though I can't exceed it. There are some things that I need to look at, but I'm going to wait until after this year has kind of got to an end to see where I'm at. And then hopefully next year. You know, if, if we consistently go under budget, then next year when I submit a budget, it's going to be less. You know, I hope that we can continue to lessen our budget. I would love that. But I haven't been able to do that.
So then the question is, if, if this were to be made a full-time position and the office to be moved into the courthouse for expenses to be paid here, then do you feel that that was, that would alleviate the burden of needing a full-time assistant for the county duties?
No, I, I deserve clerical staff like every other department. I among all of them should have clerical staff. You know, it's not, I, I do secretarial work too. I answer phones, I do all of that stuff. But I still need someone to help with this. I mean, our phones are probably the most active phones out of all, I mean, maybe the highway department seems like this year. But, you know, I mean, our phones have always been active. And especially when I'm dealing with felony cases and things. My issue is, I need to deal with public safety. So when we have these situations and we have these issues and when you say, okay, I try to fit everything within the timeframe that you want me to do. But in the end, I am the thin blue line in this community. I am concerned with public safety. So right now, I have four cases that are waiting for me to deal with. I have 10 o'clock hitting. And I go in this weekend to work on them. So I'm, if you want to look at full-time, I'll look at full-time. I have been a little resistant to that because we've never done that within this community, ever. And it has to be an appropriate amount in order to make sure that I can pay my law school loans and I can do everything that I need to do. That's just me. And I'm no different than anybody else that would be coming into this community wanting to do this job.
So how are records kept for the volume of cases that we have in the county?
I just keep them. I mean, I think I submitted you early on the list of where it is. I mean, I think with my budget or prior to, I submitted something. I know for the entire district is how we keep them. And so there's a paper that shows all of the cases that every, every county has.
So is that something I can just request from your office or is that something that...
Yeah, I sent it to you previously, I sent it to this board. So...
This year.
Yeah, I did. So I know I sent it to you guys, I sent it with my budget and I let you guys know what's going on with that, so.
With your budget, I only received the, you had sent out multiple counties to do a comparison of attorney budgets and salaries?
Mm-hmm.
There wasn't anything about case volume?
I can pull it off and email it to you today if you want it to all of you. It shows all of the cases across the district.
Yeah, that would be interesting, I would like to see that.
It is interesting because we have high volume in Lincoln County. Sadly.
Well, then I think we need to continue discussions about the, the status of the employment for the county attorney.
I don't know. I've always tried to be very financially reasonable with what I have. And at the end of the day, I do what I need to do. You know, I've tried murder cases, I've tried rape cases, I've tried rape cases regarding children. I save babies, I do all that. And at the end of the day, it doesn't matter what lands on my doorstep, I deal with it. You can ask anyone who deals with me. You can ask him. He knows where I go and he knows what I do. And at the end of the day, I'll, I'll deal with what I have to deal with continually. Because that's the promise that I made to this community. So... Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dawn, I'll be in touch.
Okay, Michael, you're up like I said. We need some cost for that Snyder gravel in that road. So we got, see? We need to figure the cost of the gravel, cost of the trucking.
Cost of gravel, trucking. What else? What we've done previously, everything from point A to point B, from start to finish, you guys have like numbers on it.
Probably need to have it broken down too so we know.
Well, I think you brought that to us originally.
Preparation, gravel and trucking. Break it down individually for us, please.
Yes. I think what I might have brought in previously was a little bit different. Breakdown, I think that was breakdown we used for wind farm with the purchase price being different than what it is today. As in, for wind farms, when I calculated that, it was about $5.50 we'd be charged a farmer for that gravel versus the cost which we pay direct to the lease. So there's a little bit of a difference there.
When you brought in that first estimate, you said we pay, you were calculating it at us paying our cost of a dollar a yard. And the markup was to $6 a yard and you said that that was including labor?
$5.50.
It was $6 when you quoted us. I, I, that was from months ago, this was like March or whatever. And it was $6 a yard and, because I did the calculations on it and I had calculated it based on the other examples that you brought to us from the county where we had done like a half a mile and three quarters of a mile. One was Tyson, another one was Work or something. And I did the numbers based on $6 a yard. And at that time you said, I asked why six if our cost is a dollar? And you said because you were calculating labor and machinery, equipment.
Waiting for equipment on loading and pushing and dosing.
Right. Right, and I remember specifically the conversation because I questioned you, well, if we're already budgeting for a given amount of labor in a year and we're doing, you know, a project like this and you said that, well, we're still calculating it as an increase in cost even though it would be covered under a person's normal 40-hour week, et cetera.
But they could be doing something else instead of buying it.
No, I understand why there's a markup on the cost. But I'm saying that we, it's very simple math. We went to $6 a yard and I believe you told me it was 17, what was the yardage for a mile?
Depends on the road.
We talked about a number that was in the 1700s.
Probably 1700 cubic yards.
Uh-huh.
That'd probably be four, four and a half inches thick. Those yardage.
Right, because I remember talking about that, saying it seemed like a lot of gravel. But you said if it was going to be on a new road, where you would have to put in a decent bed. This, because we talked about what it costs when you guys do spot gravelling on top of an already existing road and you're still accruing man-hours equipment. But the, the gravel itself was less because you're not putting on that thick layer. So we talked about approximately $10,200 a mile.
Plus trucking on top of that.
Trucking...
Getting it from the pit to the roadside. There's that expense also.
Okay, yeah, I would like to see the breakdown of that. I just know that we had this conversation previously.
Hey, what do you have for us, Michael?
What did we say, it was 30 miles round trip from Wolf Creek to...
I think it's probably 35 to 36 miles. Round trip. You guys did ship Jesse Zacco the last week, is that correct?
No.
Okay. This will be a new hire.
Oh, new hire?
For bridge crew.
Okay, great.
Does this fill our bridge crew positioning then since we transferred the one?
Yes, it does. I have a motion to employ Jesse Zacco upon completion of his pre-employment stuff.
I will move.
You have a second?
I have a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Motion carrying.
Are you not voting?
I had a question, but that's okay. I, I don't matter typically, so we'll just continue in that trend.
Here's some information that I got from Norman Bowers. And this is in regards to the survey that was conducted up on the property adjacent to Mel Blackwoods northwest of Warner. And it's a pretty good article, this was published back in 2008. And basically what it gets down to, there's one sentence in here that really nails me. And it says, uh, basically what it says, not only are you not going to move the road, you can't move the road. So the road is where it is now and the road is where it will stay. And this goes back to case law from the 1800s, late 1800s, 1886, the Supreme Court. The state of Kansas made that determination at that time. And there has not been one since then. Has, or never has, but... So I visited with the surveyor on this and he kind of figured that's what was going to happen. You know, he's still, is a little bit perplexed by the fact of how the road was laid out versus what a true survey was. I, with your guys' permission, I guess I was going to share this article with the landowner and let him know that this stance is probably where the county, or definitely will be where the county wants. You know, I know, he was, I believe his wife was pretty quick in the conversation to mention litigation right away. I, I don't think that they have anything to stand on. The way it sounds, it's something, I'm not saying it's super common, but it happens quite often where these situations arise throughout the country at the end of the state.
Yeah, probably need to man this article, thanks, thank you.
Karen at the landfill as well as Dana, we're wondering if they, you guys would object to them changing to winter hours starting October 14th or October 21st? And that would basically affect Saturdays? They usually do, I think time change is time change. Time change this year has got pushed way back into November. November 5th, I believe.
Is there a, is there traffic flow, a slowdown?
They said it's slowing down, you know, and this will be several weeks out yet. They did say they have a house cleaned up on 7th. It's going to be brought in on Saturdays, they wanted to stay open for that.
I think economic development's working on some kind of cleanup deal, grant, aren't they? So whatever, if that occurs on a Saturday, they probably...
On what days did you say, Michael? Either the 14th or the 21st. The cleanup's going to be on the 7th, that he knew about.
Okay, maybe that's, maybe that's it.
You said they're bringing in at least one house or something like that.
I don't know why, but I thought Kelly's email said October 14th. Was there free day?
Yes. I'll check in with Kelly and see.
I don't think they cleared an entire house that Goshere was in.
No, I think it was just cleanup properties.
So I would be, I think later the better from the 21st, it would be better than...
I'll check with Kelly to make sure there wasn't something else planned that landfill might not know about.
She's been emailing in, but I don't know why I had in my head October 14th.
Okay.
But maybe she come up and talk to us, but we changed it to.
And it brings me back to the Highland Lake Dam situation. Kind of need to figure out what we're going to do there. Are we going to employ an engineering firm to do an inspection on that dam? And then even prior to that, I guess ultimately, we have this emergency action plan. There's no way around the action plan as long as we are the operators of that dam. You know, there's no monetary value associated with this, but it does require the signature of myself, Sheriff Mike Weigle, the Emergency Preparations, Emergency Management Office. We think that, you know, we have the action plan written or...
700 pages.
It's... Your office here, it's quality right here. But outside of that, it's something that we are required to do, so... As long as we're the operator, we're going to have to not only approve the plan once we're happy with it, but we do need to get an inspection done on that dam. And it will come at a cost. It will easily be $3,000 to $3,500 for that inspection.
Yearly?
Every three years.
So $1,000 a year?
Average, yes. We might get lucky. I have not sought out an engineer yet, and I did ask Kirk and Michael if they had somebody. They said they had somebody that could do it that's not on a full-time status with their department. But state did supply me with a rather large list of pre-approved engineers for those services. Kirk and Michael was on there. They were ones that we've been using for engineering services. Do we want to continue that, or do we need to?
What did Kirk and Michael do on Vesper Road this past week?
More than likely Kirk and Michael would have been there with that sign program.
What are we going to do about that? You said you had intentions of lowering the signs, and harvest is upon us.
That is contingent upon after the sign program is completed and approved by the federal highway in KDOT. We're not allowed to do anything with those signs until we get final approval from those agencies.
So what happens to the, you said there have already been some damaged. What happens to those?
While the program's still going on, they're supposed to come back and replace those underneath the program. And then once they approve everything, it becomes our responsibility, and if they get damaged, it will be coming out of our budget.
So do you have to report the damaged signs to them?
We have been trying to help them along the way with it, but they, they will be doing drive-throughs and inspections themselves ongoing.
So we have some time before they complete the project, and if things get ruined during harvest, they'll come back through?
Hypothetically, you know, they could be done in two weeks' time. You know, and we're not going to be able to go around in two days' time and get all the signs put in acceptable place, which they will not get destroyed by a farm. If farmers choose to destroy them, I guess that's their choice. It's their money that they are destroying.
Well, if they're caught, they can get in trouble too, can't they? Do you know who it is?
It, everybody's faced with it, and it's not, it's not fair to the traveling public, and it's not fair to the taxpayers that the signs get destroyed because a farmer does not want to remove the sign or not necessarily remove it, but, you know, you can temporarily unbolt the post, lay it down, go pass, and put it back up.
So are they able to call your department then?
And ask to go remove it for them so they can take their combine? No, we will not be doing that.
Who can take their header trailer?
They have a header trailer that they can move their wide load equipment down the road safely without damaging our signs if they choose to do it.
At that Highland Dam, I don't know that we have a choice to have it inspected. You know, I, and that's, unfortunately, that's just one of those things that you have to spend. Spend money for it, it's probably not a wise use of tax money, but...
We might benefit from an inspection too, because the thing is still did in while it changed, but didn't.
It won't change the emergency action plan because they base it off of the plans when it was designed versus the way it is now. But in all reality, if the dam was to breach, the damage is not going to be to the extent in which this portrays it to be.
Not only that, but the valve is gone off the drawdown pipe, and it's constantly drawing down, and it's just basically what causes the water, I think, by this.
I'd be more than happy to contact Kirk and Michael, or if I need to contact three other firms to give us a bid on it, I would be more than happy to do whatever you guys would like me to do there.
I suppose we could have more than one.
Probably contact, let's see him.
Michael, last week I had asked you if you think that the line item contractual in your budget could handle about $3,000 worth of expense going to contracted engineer. If you were to have a contracted engineer between now and the end of the year, what would you have him do?
What would I have them do through the end of the year? Several things I could look at. One is a little bit more drainage issue on Union Road, that one other site. As far as getting caught up and ready to work on any projects, if they're ugly, we haven't anything else we have to do yet this year. We have time to complete.
Okay, so what you would have him do is work on the drainage issue on Union, a third site in addition to the two that we've already permitted?
Three that had been permitted.
The one was on 30th?
Well, yes.
So two on Union, a third site on Union, in addition to the two on Union that were permitted? Okay, so if there are no further projects that are going to be initiated between now and the end of the year, what services would you be able to solicit from a contracted engineer in the next three months? October, November, December? If you knew someone was going to be here for eight hours a month that you had access to utilize with his professional services, what would you be doing with him for those 24 hours?
More than likely, if we were to employ somebody to do that, we'd be looking at some bridges more than likely. You know, it's, and not necessarily just bridges, but box culverts, you know, some of the smaller structures.
So you would be?
But, you know, at the end of the day, we can look at and plan and have everything in place, but if we don't have the time and resources to do anything with it, once we get the plan of action on something, we're not really benefiting.
So box culverts and bridges, you're saying you would potentially have them work on a plan? For any specific ones, or you would have them look and see which ones they would?
Now, we have a list that we can look through and come up with some stuff.
Okay. I would appreciate to see this list. We've been kind of beating around the bush about this list for months, and I believe the commission needs to look at the list, whatever this list is, however it's formatted. I'm not asking for a specific, you know, format, but this list I would like to see because you did bring us the proposal for an engineer hoping that that's what we would vote for, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. But now, when I ask you what we would do with this engineer, you're saying you would find something, you know, according to the list that you have, which I would, I would really appreciate seeing that list so that I can know what you're talking about. And I guess my, to further my question, then, if you had access to this engineer, which you brought before us as a proposal, would we be able to use that person the remainder of this year to help get you planning for next year?
I just don't think we have the resources to get more accomplished than what we already have out on the table in front of everybody to look at, you know, whether it's, well, we got three bridges right up there where we're working on that culvert that needs some work done. We still have the one on the oil road south of Sylvan that needs to get done. And, you know, we can go to 10 other places in which we need to do, actually, we need to do more than that, more than likely, but it's just having the resources to get the jobs completed.
Okay, so we have a whole new budget starting in January. What's first?
Weather, of course, depends what we get done this fall.
What's first on your priority list?
So, like I said, we got the three bridges, dogs, and so down, right up in that area where we're working on whackers till now.
Are those all on Union?
No, they're in that area though.
Okay, what are they? I, I mean?
We got some, two on 20th Road, two on 20th Road, one over on Bethany Road. We got one on Sylvan Wall.
The culvert under, that goes under the road?
Yes.
On Sylvan? So you have three bridges in, what township is that?
Probably Seeger.
Seeger. So out of those three bridges, and the culvert on 6th, which one are you going to move to first?
More than likely, rather than one there on 20th area, just west of where we're working. It's came off the edge of the road, and it's got all the equipment out there. That's our most likely spot of agility in there.
So that's before the end of this year, though?
Well, for, that depends on weather and all that kind of stuff. It's always same.
So the equipment that you have working on whackers is potentially going to sit there through December?
Weather doesn't hold out for us. It could hypothetically.
I'd say it depends on the weather. If it keeps this up, it might.
So now I'm confused. I guess I'm asking, you know, if you came to us wanting an engineer, and now you're saying, well, we can't really use one, how, how is the?
He's trying to tell you that he's got more work right now than he can accomplish, so he doesn't need anything engineered right away. I think so, he's trying to tell you.
And with this whole initiative, it sounds like a great idea. It really does, if we can utilize it. But it's not something I feel that we can utilize to be effective beyond where we are right now. I hope that makes sense, you know, and I didn't go out and seek this. It was their idea to present it.
Okay, oh, I remember the discussion when we were downstairs, when, when the proposal was brought that you're saying was drafted by Kirk and Michael. I understand that, and that was brought to the commission. And during that discussion, I specifically asked him, would he be able to help us prepare a strategic plan of action in a prioritized manner for our highway department? And what was his response?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. He does that for other counties. Is there a reason that we in this room can't come to an agreement that we need that?
I, I guess I'm a little bit confused on your want of this list so bad, I guess, you know? We have plenty of work to do, and we can prioritize every project for two years if we wanted to sit down and take the time to try doing that. The problem is, there's going to be 30, 40 other projects that are going to slip in prior to those even getting done, because they're going to hit something to where it may fail prior to another bridge or another drainage structure. Or this road had some massive erosion due to flooding in this part of the county that the other county didn't give. You know, to me, it seems like you think we don't have any work to do, but we have tons of work to do, and we are working on it as fast and promptly as we can.
The last thing I've ever suggested is that there's not anything to do for the highway department. That is the last thing that I have ever even alluded to. So that's not true. The question about the list is because a good leader has a list, and it doesn't matter if unforeseen circumstances happen. Do you mow your grass? Do you mow your grass?
Yes, sir.
Do you not mow your grass because it might rain?
I mow it when it needs to.
Right. So just because something may happen doesn't mean that you don't do something. Do you plan to mow your grass next week because you have a day off? Of course. Do you not make that plan just because it might be a hailstorm? No, you still have the plan in place. And whether you deviate from that plan or not is not the question. The question is, where's the plan? And we've had this discussion over and over, and I think, you know, it was brought to my attention that there are a lot of notes that, that you've kept personally, Bob, from years ago.
I told you, we're going, I figured I'm going to that other bridge on 20th, going on one, on down the road after that. Just told you, the whole list of places we're going, we've got a plan to go to. But that depends on a lot of factors, whether we get there, the weather, or if there's something else following down the other corner of the county. Let's see. We just can't say today we're going here, tomorrow we're going here, and the next day we're going here, because we can say that, but we may end up 100 miles from there. So, yeah. Just told you, we're going to that bridge, and that one, and that one.
Well, I think the fact that you brought up how you have notes clear back from 1999, I think that's a perfect example about how keeping records is, is a good idea, and it gives a solid foundation for, for you knowing and for other people knowing what is happening, what has happened. There's also another aspect to that, which what is, what is supposed to happen? And it doesn't mean, you're not getting judged or graded based on whether that happens or not. It's just whether or not there is foresight. And I see what you're saying. You're able to tell me verbally, yes, you know, there's this bridge and that bridge and et cetera. But I've asked about a few particular bridges repeatedly, and you've never been able to tell me as a group, you know, well, those aren't on the priority list because, or they are on the priority list because. So if we don't have that list saying, okay, 20th is a highly traveled road, these two bridges are, are in the most need of repair on that road, and they're priority red, you know? There's just an aspect of preparation that, you want to know why I'm questioning it. It's not because there's not work to do, Michael. It's because there is work to do. It's the exact opposite. I'm not sure why it's hard for you to physically produce a list. I mean, I've seen lots of, lots of paperwork that you've brought in front of us, lots of bids, lots of searching out for specific things and, and bringing us that information. I've seen you do it. So for you to not do that when you're specifically asked, I'm wondering, what is the reason?
The ultimate reason is, you can provide that list, and when it does change, people do get upset. You know, let, let's say I provided you a list with 30 projects on it tomorrow. And those 30 projects, five of them were able to get completed within a year. Then we have something come up that those other projects take a back burner on. So there you have a list that we brought out, presented to the public, that gets pushed back three, four years. And it's just one of those things that, when dealing with public, they tend to get a little bit agitated when projects get put off. You know, so sometimes you're going to be presented with... You know, so sometimes you're gonna be presenting problems that they don't realize is a problem, and then they're gonna make it their problem and then our problem. Does that make sense? You know, it, it's bringing so many more things to light that sometimes not everybody needs to know, step by step by step, everything we're doing, because it incites the public. And I, I, I do have issues with that. You know, 'cause I'm not gonna lie, we have plenty of work to do.
You do have plenty of work to do. But if you think that the public isn't ultimately your employer, then you're sadly mistaken.
No, I'm not mistaken. I understand.
Okay. Well, to have a list or a fiber plan-
We have a list. We just have not provided it to the board.
You have anything else?
That's all I have. A lot of you got something?
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. This thought.
I guess Southern we're working on the whacker pipe up there.
Oh, yeah. How much you get there?
We got it, pipe set in there, and they're getting it, roll it together and stuff. And they're sort of, got a pile and start to try to get the wing walls and stuff on, and it'll start back building.
You know how much rain it had around the pen?
I don't know. I had thirty, a couple of bushes that they had around a half inch coming up there a while ago. The west falls that didn't even sprinkle down there earlier, they may have now. They went up there, it's a site up there, and said it was pretty muddy up there. So I don't know just how much rain there. That rain pretty good, and after I got over here. And other than that, I guess I just know myself, been warming late enough. Getting all the old rock. I trust, see me up, there a couple of spring areas up on coal. Up in that area. Try to put some in those places. Some out here on that guard. So, over a little out, see how that's gonna work out, so. And then that mostly has been concentrated up there on the pipe, trying to get it, others out.
Yep.
Site prepared.
Bob, how much concrete did you haul out? You said to Jaguar?
I don't remember, I'd have to go back and look on that.
Just, oh, just an estimate, like just a couple truckloads, or did you do a big stretch?
Five truckloads, five twenty yard, about a hundred cubic yards.
Is there anything going on top of that, or was that on a dirt road, or?
Dirt road.
Just to, just to clean up a bad spot? So are we currently hauling out of Wolf Creek?
No, because we haven't had any. Vehicle resources did, we're finally getting some help back now. Because we've got a lot of people off.
You had told me-
A motor man, or a truck driver, and stuff that work on, I have a trucker, so we don't have the people to do that.
To do hauling?
One or two trucks now and then.
You told me that there was something wrong with the crossing there. Is that still an issue, or?
Well, we'll do some more work on it. They kind of gotta patch up where we get across it. But, but when we, if we gotta haul one out of there, we'll have to do some more work. If there's some more, it'll be over there, it worsens it down, and we have to put rock back in and redo it. But right now, it's passable.
Is that on our county line? Is that in our county line or not? It's not?
All Lincoln County.
It's what?
It's all in Lincoln County.
I'm sorry, I said that. Okay. It is in Lincoln County?
Yes.
That pit? So, the reason that we hauled from up north in Mitchell County is because we couldn't get into Wolf Creek?
They had a different product.
Did that all go onto X-ray?
Yeah.
Everything we hauled out of there went straight to there?
That one, that's all we did out of there. And there is, the whole distance, very little difference. We don't want to see what material it's likely or worth pursuing further down really or not.
Any feedback on that?
So, so far, it's standing up real good and looking real good.
Well, whatever you guys did this past year to the road by Sylvan School, I mean, it's held up. Is that the one inch road rock from Quartzite? Or APAC, excuse me?
We've got them along there long now. I think most of that come out of Wolf Creek.
That did come from Wolf Creek? Well, it's held up very well.
Gets a lot of traffic out of it.
That makes a difference. Traffic count on it. First out quicker, it'll get firm up quicker too.
And anything else, guys? Soon you're here to see us.
Yes.
Out the road. Um, we discussed with our county attorney. We have received your offer of plans. We need some hard numbers from our county guys on the exact costs so we can analyze that proposal. And we should have those by next week. And I think we'll probably discuss that.
No, that's me.
Okay.
Could I ask a different?
You may, you may, Bob, I will let you, just one, don't worry, right? Just one?
Jean Meitler's gravel.
Jean Meitler's gravel is Wolf Creek?
Okay. Because I was under the impression that it's less expensive to get.
Well, it won't. No, our, we pay the same forever pit.
They're the same.
Now, wait a minute. We just paid a lot more in Mitchell County. I know that, because we got the bill.
That's our part. That was not, I would have hit that one up there.
Okay. I don't, okay. Are you asking if Meitler, if, if, excuse me, Wolf Creek was cheaper than any other place that we get it in the county, or that we've ever paid for it?
I don't know what the county rate is. If it's the same here, there's a difference. We pay a million dollars, one dollar a cubic yard. Okay, that's all I can say.
Jean, it's a dollar fifty.
But we have to mind it.
What's that?
Jean told me a dollar fifty. She told me, I asked him.
Well, it doesn't matter, he's getting a dollar per yard. That's what a disagreement is.
That's what it says in the contract, the culvert. That's the only question we have. I didn't know Wolf Creek and Meitler was similar.
Yeah, Jean, my first.
Okay.
Anything else?
I have a few here.
No, I don't care, you can stay all day.
Fifteen miles, Jean, from Wolf Creek to the center. Fifty foot. Eighteen point. One mile, one direction, one mile, yeah.
I've been going that round yet.
Yeah, right, that's one one.
Close to thirty-five is what I figured.
One way going, the main brown road, over to Green Valley Road and straight down.
Yeah, we'll, we'll run one eighty-one by way. And I'm gonna take up our loose.
We're gonna take a twelve fifteen mile of our gravel there.
Do that. State highways since it's right there.
Not much of it, but very little bit.
Probably not, not.
If you get up in that track, no matter which way you go.
Which way, a half a mile or a mile over there in one direction.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Bob, thank you for coming in. Thank you for, had a nice rain. So now you can share with us this.
Well, I put on my jeans this evening because I thought I'd have to share. I put on my feet.
Oh.
Thank you.
You may.
Anything else for us?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We can enjoy the rain while we're getting it.
I know it doesn't help either, help somebody else.
Well, it does help us a lot. There's just that transition period that a lot of people get impatient about. You know, the moisture helps us as much.
Road did. Road did the worst.
It's been messy for a little while, and then it'll settle down, pick up later on.
As long as we're not flooded.
I don't think so. I don't have a flood.
Okay, we have this letter of support.
Would you like me to reread it?
Okay. I'll check. Read it. I have a motion to sign letter of support for Vesper, community club.
I still move.
Second. Questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried.
I don't think you were in here this morning. I had drafted a letter of support because the Vesper Community Center contacted me. I'm the representative for their district, and they wanted a letter of recommendation so that they can apply for some grant funding, not from the county, but from other resources. And we were going to support them in their efforts. They're doing a remodeling project on their facility.
What do you have for us, Dawn?
This is that resolution on the job policies.
You didn't find another one?
No.
Do we have the revised version from Jennifer?
This is it.
Oh, this is it, this is not, oh, he meant, he meant you never found one at all in previous years? I'll read the resolution aloud. Lincoln County Job Description Policy. Board of County Commissioners duly assembled in regular session this twenty-fifth day of September, two thousand seventeen, and by the authority vested in said board, do hereby resolve, according to KSA nineteen two twelve and in accordance with all applicable laws and regulations, to establish a plan to organize and maintain job descriptions for the employees of Lincoln County, Kansas. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners has determined it is in the best interest of said county to enact said policy in order to monitor performance of said employees and to ensure consistent descriptions for each employment position. Be it resolved sections one through five. All regular full-time inscription on file at clerk's office. They will include essential functions and position requirements. Um, A through C on file at clerk's office. Copy provided to department head or elected official and copy for the employee. Section two, purpose of job descriptions. When the position is vacated, the job description will be utilized to determine the minimum qualifications. The job description will be a tool for performance appraisals. And the job description will outline the main possibilities and duties of the position. It is not intended to be all inclusive. Section three, request for change of that job description. Um, when the content of a position changes significantly, it will be adjusted accordingly. The department head or elected official will contact human resources. And an employee that would like anything to be changed would go through their department head or elected official, and they will need to be approved by the department head or elected official. Section four, the most recently approved job description in the clerk's office will be considered the current version. And section five, annual review of job descriptions. At a minimum, department heads and elected officials will review job descriptions for their respective departments on an annual basis. Annual review of descriptions shall be conducted by December thirty-first of each year. I move to adopt resolution twenty seventeen seventeen, Lincoln County Job Description Policy.
Go to the second. All right. Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, same sign, motion carried. Anything else for us, Dawn?
Are we still having? Oh, that's not until ten, that's not ten yet.
Oh, the health insurance.
Oh, yeah.
Do you wanna discuss that?
Yes.
Jeremy was recalled and asked to get off the agenda about what we're going to come today. Um, we didn't know, we should, because we was getting now on Monday and whatnot. But we went ahead and did it, it was okay. And Hannah told me, we'll do something out in the future. And we did, like, before we get on, we didn't know. But we could tell that it was okay today, and so we need to take it.
When?
Give him a portion of a slot.
All right.
Yes, thank you. The agenda wasn't posted online anyhow.
Well, is there any? Hi, Tammy.
Morning.
That's okay, we'll take you. We got, we're in the middle, we're out, we're in between, I guess. Okay.
I just wanted to let you guys know that last week at my Pandas Register Aid Association state meeting, I was appointed to our executive board, which is for your commitment. So there'll be at least twice a year that I'll be gone for at least a week, attending meetings. And then a day here and here.
Thank, thank you, congratulations.
Well, if I, if my old memory serves correctly, I think the last, last that I remembered anybody from Lincoln County being on this endorsement straight. That's all I needed, was to just let you guys know.
Got it. Rachel's office.
Yes.
You can have the way.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Thanks. We'll see how this works. All right, thank you.
Hopefully it goes well.
I think it will. It's all, you know, your mindset, whether or not it will go well, good or terrible. I think it'll be all right.
Okay, health insurance. Questions, discussion about that?
I don't know, it's urgent.
Okay, shall we? Well, maybe we can break. Can we break?
Yeah.
Let's break.
I must, for testers.
We'll break for five, ten minutes.
Unfortunately, if they can get it this far, it'll be us that will be taken out.
Yeah.
We'll take out the Senator of the United States.
Okay, what do you wanna do about this health insurance?
I guess, see, like a plan, I guess, why not?
The ten percent?
Yeah.
I don't think we have any choice. I don't think we can stay on what we were doing.
Dime the lines that we budgeted, so.
Well, who is going to explain this at the employee meeting? Because I've actually heard that there were a few employees that quit because of this coming down to pipe. And, you know, if you explain it to someone as it's a hundred percent increased cost to the employee, this is true. But the overall percentage increase, we're incurring a seven percent increase. And we've been previously paying five percent of the total cost. So if we increase it to ten percent, we're still absorbing two percent plus, because the actual overall cost is going up. You know what I mean? It's, it's hard to explain it and say, yes, your cost is doubling, but we're, we're still only increasing your overall cost of the whole plan by five percent. Do you know what I mean? That's a hard concept to- That's a hard concept to get across in a quick discussion. Is Deborah supposed to?
Deborah, well, yeah, she's a lady, health insurance lady.
I mean, do either of you plan on speaking to the employees about it?
I suppose so.
Have you had input that people have left their jobs or contemplating leaving?
I haven't been told that by an employee. I mean, they knew that this, something's gonna yield. I've been preaching to them for four or five years.
At these employee meetings, you mean?
Yes, it could not continue.
So then will you address them as the chairman this time?
Sure, I can address them.
I just feel like maybe the board owes them an explanation rationally about what the numbers mean.
I think they want to talk to them.
Rationally, though, if you say what you just said, then you're gonna turn every single mind off and they're not gonna listen to you.
Because?
Because they're thinking that you're justifying why you're increasing their insurance a hundred percent. And, and you are. But you are gonna turn them off. They're not going to listen to you and they're not going to care whether or not the county's overall insurance cost went up seven percent and, and so on and so forth.
I think one of the things that we can, one of the positive things is that there are more options now.
Really?
And those options are cheaper. And when I was looking at it, I, you know.
Well, yeah, they can be down to forty-eight dollars, which is less than the sixty dollars. So is this one, and that one's only eight dollars more. So really, it's your premium Plan A that's that huge. But most people are on that, from what I understand. Not that I know that personally, but just.
Really any choice.
There's no choice. There's A or there's C.
Right, right.
And most of our aging population isn't wanna go, doesn't wanna go to a Plan C, just telling you, because their health insurance costs are more. And when you're paying a hundred percent of the costs out of your pocket, they don't, they don't look at it that way. Where a younger person who never goes to the doctor would have absolutely no problem paying a little bit more out of their paycheck to put into this account and sinking in. But your older population of workers are not going to go to the Plan C. So that's why everybody was pretty much on Plan A. But there was, a couple of years ago, there was another plan option where like your office visits were ten dollars. That's been a couple of years ago. There was quite a few people in that, so.
Well, I mean, the best explanation then, if you don't want to use percentages, if you're insinuating that they can't understand that, then I would suggest that we tell them, you know, these are the five options, these are the five prices per plan. And then they can hear a number that they like and look at the plan and see if that's the plan that fits their idea of what they're gonna be using as far as health coverage.
I mean, I don't think it hurts to tell them what the overall cost of the plan is. But I'm, what I'm saying is not that they won't understand the percentages, but what I'm going to say is that they are not going to listen to what you have to say because you're gonna use so many numbers throwing out there that they're just gonna shut down because their overall concern is what is out of their pocket, not how much is costing account. They don't care about that.
Well, by not doing a yearly, I'm not criticizing, I'm just stating a fact. By not doing a yearly increase and doing, you know, absorbing that increase into the county every year because we are receiving an increase on this end and them not seeing any increase in that, you know, they get stuck in a pattern of thinking that a flat rate exists forever. So then we absorb the difference, the overall cost, until it finally hits and then you have to do this increase and it looks like a bigger increase. You know, to us, we're thinking, well, good, we only, we only incurred a seven percent increase. You told me one year it was twenty-two or twenty-five percent. So.
I was, I was back before we got mistaken for.
Just as an example, though, I'm saying, we're saying, oh, seven percent isn't that much. But the ultimate factor is it's not just seven percent, it's the last four years that there hasn't been an increase. We've absorbed that every year. So it's probably more like twenty-something percent at least.
Do you have a motion to establish the employee part of the health insurance of ten percent?
I would sort of move.
Or, I guess, there are a few of these that may vary, right?
It won't quite be the ten percent.
Huh?
It won't quite be the ten percent.
Oh, it won't quite be.
The ones in red.
Okay, okay, maximum of ten percent. So that's what the motion, that'd be a maximum of ten percent. So I would move that the.
Terry already.
Oh, Terry. Okay, I'll second. Okay, now, discussion.
If I could suggest an amendment to the motion, it may be better to read that we pay ninety percent of the total cost.
They can decipher that from the ten percent that they're paid.
I'm just giving you a suggestion as to how it reads.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion's carried. Okay, Dawn, has that got something else?
No.
Looks, looks like it's still wet out there.
Yeah, I started walking this morning and it was nice. Till I got about to the hospital and then it started sprinkling on me and I thought, oh, it's okay. Then I got around the corner, I don't know, three blocks later and it was downpouring on me. And by the time I got home, I, I got, well, I just, I decided, I'm wet already, I'm just gonna walk normal around. Got to Fifth Street and Bullland and it stopped raining. And then the wind came up. Want to talk about cold? Was flipping cold as wet as I was.
I was, I was stopped at the hospital and called the taxi.
No, because he even told me you were the stupid one that went out to walk in the rain, get yourself home.
Oh, no, you wouldn't do that.
It was actually very nice. I love rain. It's very relaxing.
It's kind of a cool rain. It would've been better if it was warm.
It just, it, it never really downpour.
I suppose you look cooler.
Yeah.
A couple days now, you're in rain, it's gonna feel colder.
They could stand to be a little cooler last week. It was pretty mean. There were a couple of those.
Come on in, Jeremy. We're ready for you. That's okay. Crick out or what?
Yeah. Looking cattle.
Looking cattle.
Just wanted to talk to you about gravel.
Gravel. Gravel agreement. Don't we have one with you?
It expired.
Oh, it expired? Did you not get a renewal deal?
Yeah.
Oh.
There's over a hundred and twenty days out. Passed when it expired.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't know if you were looking at a being price.
No, we had a dollar, the dollars, people, we were doing that. That's where we're at on all of it. Prosecement.
I didn't know. I've got a guy that says he pays around five or six dollars. Very far. It sat there for almost two years.
What, piled? Yeah. And that kind of depends on where we're at in the county, hauling gravel.
Well, two years ago, about this time, the guys, county department was looking and we had a weak plant.
No.
It's been a little later. We told them if they needed the gravel, they could pile it up. They did.
Yeah.
They haven't ever touched it in two years.
That's, that's typical of us, pile and gravel, so whenever we move in that area, we, we have a pile so we can go ahead and start hauling right away. So I wasn't aware it'd been quite that long, but.
My problem is I've seen trucks go by hauling gravel, just going right by the farm.
Oh, no, I don't. Unless it even, I don't know. You'd have to ask Michael. Why don't you visit with Michael, involve about it? This is the first I was aware that we had our gravel agreement expired. Just go down to the office and do it with Michael about it. See what you can make of it. No, we didn't have any thing about it then anyway.
I'm sorry, you'll have to just reiterate a little bit for me so I understand. What you're saying is you had a two-year gravel agreement?
I'm not sure.
They're typically two years. And it's expired more than a hundred and twenty days ago.
Expired in May, so.
Expired in May, okay. And you're saying we have a significant amount that we have dug and piled, that we have not extracted?
Through the summer, I let it slip along, but nobody ever contacted me or anything. Now, wondering if gravel was mine or not.
Probably not. I would visit with Michael about it and see what the deal is. And it could be a slip up on, did they ever send you a renewal?
Yeah.
You just didn't turn it in. Okay.
But we have not paid you for what they piled?
No.
No, we paid as they hauled.
I have, though. We hauled out in twenty sixteen in July.
That's the last date?
And that, well, and that wasn't this pile, but it was.
Maybe you had a pile, another pile, okay. And that sometimes happens, Jeremy. We don't haul every year out of those pits.
Yeah, I understand that. I just have a problem tearing up your farm ground and piling it up.
And then leaving.
Yeah.
Well, you can visit with Michael about it.
Do you have a copy of your contract?
I don't have my, I have a copy of the contract. I don't know that I ever get it in May. I was looking and I.
She's mailed it. Liz has said that she's mailed it several times.
I have that, but it doesn't have, I don't have the old contract I signed.
Oh, yeah, no, they would just mail you the new one.
Yeah.
Which is exactly the same, just that you insert a different date.
So who keeps that on record? The highway department?
It's like that's what it is, but.
Yeah.
There's nothing in there that says I have to notify them.
Yeah.
Notify us of what?
My decision is. And in this couple of letters, it says we know that was, the agreement expired in May. Now, she says I know the address was incorrect, which it was, but they never got it back.
Yeah.
I got the letter.
I would go up and visit with Michael, see what's going on.
You can also request a copy of your original prenup.
Okay.
Alright, thanks. Thanks.
Thank you for bringing your attention.
He might be up there now to.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Okay, anything else?
I move to request the project list from the highway department that is currently being withheld according to today's discussion with public works director in order to analyze utilization of taxpayer dollars.
Give us a second. Motion dies for lack of second. Anything else coming for the support this morning?
Do, did we officially establish the end of the month meeting for Wednesday? Do we have to put that in?
I had just put up earlier that we were going to meet immediately following.
I guess, do you have to put out another, a public note, to the agenda requesters? Do you need to send out notification of that today, today or tomorrow?
Not. I normally don't to the agenda requesters because I don't do an agenda for the end of the month meeting only unless I'm doing an agenda. But I notify the newspaper because they have a request that any meeting changes be notified to them.
Okay.
Anything else? Not as many stands until Wednesday at two o'clock, right, Dawn?
Yep.
In the compartment there.
Yeah, bring your umbrella in, Howard.
Don't you need it? Mary, did you want one today or you want one Wednesday?
How many, uh?
Baby, Bob.
How much rain did you get, Howard?
Quarter inches for you.
Quarter.
Quarter.
Oh, advocate.
You know, boy, came two and a half on the radio. That when I was coming over town. They'd had an inch and a half less yesterday or less than that. And they've had another inch this morning, morning.
I looked at the gauge at the house there right before I left, it was three quarters.